Team everyone, it is Monday, June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call building board meeting to order at six P M. And we will, we will begin with roll call. Uh trustee Hooker, here trustee Woods, here trustee Holmes, here trustee Greaves, here trustee Thompson, here President Montgomery, here, and we are missing trustee Jackson. I don't know if we have heard from him. Okay, so he may arrive later. Um can we, uh, we would invite the audience behind us for the better meetings. I'm like, I'm the United States of America. And this is the pre-collaboration for which stands one edition under God in this goal with liberty and justice for all.
I quit my career, you might have mentioned. I'm trying to do, two weeks ago, I talked about something, and I remember you mentioned about the next meeting. Okay, what do you mean that?
Okay, or I'm gonna say you might have caught up.
Yeah, that's a question.
Okay, thank you. So let me, let me state these. Um, the next guy on our agenda here, are there any persons to join in the hearing?
There are no persons, President.
Thank you. And then, uh, in your package, you'll be see, uh, reports on staff and my report. We reached over a lot of activities that went on. Any questions? How does?
For, um, you guys met in Milwaukee, they were just for those ones. Um, you don't have any on your hands? I know that this was something that you guys.
Yeah, they just have one in their, in their, so we were just talking about that one. Um, and, and just some asking for it. So there'd be some other potentials, but at this point, they're just asking, you know, for what our interest of participation would be, you know, beyond that one. Um, and just my talking point while there's a, a, a general interest in the idea that, um, you know, I relayed to them to do some kind of presentation at the I C C level and account level. So I'd like to see what, you know, from a region perspective, what the interest would be. Uh, but yeah, so they just have one house in possession.
Okay, and the, uh, just a comment I want to make on, on my report, I want to make sure that I've got these, um, now. Um, I had an opportunity to do a ride along with police department as well as, um, with fire department. And, uh, I think they're open to, obviously, if you're interested, go through the process. And give you an, uh, idea of what they go through on database. The only thing I would say is, I'm proud of this sort of person out here, trying to get up on fire truck was interesting. But, I mean, I get that. But, uh, uh, I learned a lot. Uh, so if you have time, they schedule it and, and, you know, we do a couple hours or longer. Either one, police or, um, fire department. So that being said, um, the next item on our agenda, number five, is, uh, consent agenda. Which could fit, um, the man from June fifth, um, the May act statement, the twenty-two, three, twenty-four hit her actions. Um, approval of the white level to the police commission and consider R I P for the building plan in section engineering. Are there any questions on any items in the center here? Uh, trustee Holmes.
Uh, I have the, the R I P with our, uh, session. Um, just had a question about, um, what a likely expectancy would be for the, the new building. It's like fifty-year life, yeah. Right. And when it's been, one of you know, you know, glad I've seen it, that you did have, uh, maintenance in here. Um, hopefully you can get that maybe, you know, broken down or something like that, because I did see a little bit in the same position, that's why I'm not. The ballpark is right, you know, because, you know, I tried, because, you know, I voiced my opinion on it, but it wasn't hurt. Now, you know, they want four hundred and twenty-five million dollars to maintain this, right? So that comes to that, see. I thought you would. Isn't there really place that I know? This is the concession building that's, uh, by that, uh, west pavilion here by the pond. So part of it's inside the pond, the baffles are on site. It's ground and wood and some brick, yeah.
So it's, it's not the main entrance building, it's that extra little building.
Correct. All right, thank you. And I thank you for that, um, question, trustee Holmes. I think it's important that we do maintain as we start, um, another municipality who has to close. Uh, who the maintenance or old equipment that they can normally get, so, um, that the pond is amenity and rapid, we want to make sure that we keep up and maintain, so. If there are no other questions, comments, can we give entertainment motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a guarantee? That's it. It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Holmes to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? I'm glad it was most appearing, thank you. Um, under new business, public hearing and consider approval on ordinance. Twenty-three or four ordinance for that, twenty-three. Round here, it's a plan update and amend chapter one eighteen, and in the village code ordinances. And, uh, that is also in our package, this is presented.
So it's presented a while ago, back in May to the, uh, plan commission, and then in June to the village board. We've delayed here because of notice requirements, uh, that require class one notice. Uh, we've been public to the north, you know, now, we've informed people that we give public hearing on this space, we do have to, uh, then open it up to a public hearing. Uh, I, I've received one comment related to the comprehensive plan, however, misguided and, and really related more towards stormwater, uh, issues in a particular person's backyard. Uh, you may be hearing about that at future date, but it's not a con plant related. Other than that, we have received no comment or feedback, uh, that I can share. Uh, I can walk the, the board through just a high level of what we are asking for today, which is the adoption of ordinance, that ordinance would effectively make the comprehensive plan update an additional land use, governing land use document in our village code. It would basically piggyback on the work that we did from the two thousand nine plan and adopted and completed many of the recommendations in there, and then this plan is the addition to it, it's divided into essentially two sections, a twelve-page summary document, with then about a thirty-page appendix that highlights all of the goals and recommendations of this update. Uh, we spent about eight months going through public involvement, survey, uh, stakeholder meetings, engagement with the planning mission. Uh, A E come, came up with the recommendations, the plan commission has adopted it. Uh, via a conclusion at their meeting in May, and so this is the last step, and we will, uh, be looking for approval of the ordinance to put that into the code. The plan would be that we would use this document on a regular basis to guide us in our land use decision-making. Anytime we have proposals in front of the village board, and as we look to modify our code to address some of the concerns that were raised.
And this will also be uploaded on the website.
It is, uh, it is on the website, we've been identifying it in the tracker, uh, and, uh, through our social media, uh, that it is available for people to consume and ask questions and feedback.
Okay, well, with that being said, um, I'd like to, uh, open up this public hearing for, uh, the public to make comments on, um, the twenty-twenty-three round here comprehensive plan update. Is there anyone here on this? Do we, I don't think I've all. No, no, alright, meeting is open, is there anyone here that would like to make comments on the public? So I will ask again, if there's anyone here that, on the public, that would like to make comments on the twenty-three three hundred and seventy. And then I will, what third gentleman? Um, if there's anyone here on the public that would like to make a comment on the twenty-twenty-three round here comprehensive plan update. Seeing that there are none, we will close the public hearing. Uh, so now we can open up to any more, but you're not the public here. So trustee Holmes.
Um, few minutes ago, I had looked at the comprehensive plan, I kind of made some comments, I was kind of giving the pass to kind of go through how I did. And so I, I did get those changes that, to title, some of them were, like, uh, in there, so I, I looked at the new one there. But I still have concern about, uh, the housing managers. What if they, they just spend the houses are one hundred, two hundred, ten? Uh, I, I think that's probably not, not, you know, in this point in time. The wild, you know, suggested that we, um, get the true and accurate figure that's especially going forward, looking at ten years on.
So what A E Tom wanted to do is they wanted to stay true to the twenty-twenty census data. That was the data that was used to build that, that, uh, talking point on, and what we did was they note that since twenty-twenty, the assessment, the assessments have changed. Uh, the assessments really increased significantly, uh, from twenty-twenty through this past year, uh, where we've seen significant growth. And I, I would also add that the twenty-twenty census builds on the values from a couple of years before, the time, you know, it's not exactly entirely in twenty-twenty, so. There was no, we made, we, we did see your comments, uh, and on that point, there is, there is, and I'm gonna pull it up if I can, uh, there is a note in there that says something to the effect that we recognize that assessments are now far exceeding that point.
I know, I, I got it right, the census values have risen since that time, but my question is, what are they? Because the average person living in here, they're gonna be thinking, okay, sixty percent of houses are a hundred, two hundred K actual buy a house, you know, today, they're changing.
Right. Well, if, if, if it's her, it's my fault. Yeah, if it's your desire, uh, we can be sure to just have, uh, compile that information from Accurate, it's pretty easy for us to get it, and just give, uh, median value for a single-family home from Accurate as a.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's what I meant, to do that, that way you probably feel good. You know, somebody that doesn't live in Browners, uh, on the brown here, they can see their discipline.
Sure, we can put it right in, in the, in the line, the asterisk, uh, about that assessment information.
And that may be an apprehensive plan, but the reality is that may not be what's happening, because houses aren't selling that's the range.
Right, and the assess, yeah, assessments, uh, typically lag what market realities are too. You may be, you still may be assessed at, you know, two-ten, but your house is selling for two-seven-five.
Right. Yeah. I agree.
Yeah. Then there, there's one other one that was on, like, uh, under issues and opportunities, it was by, okay, to, to items to consider in the plan. Um, so the ground here is rich in diversity, defining very, very, very. It is the one place in the metropolitan area where successful minority families can establish all ownership, enjoy the perceived benefits of suburbia, that's natural. And reason why I did that, I mean, I lived in, in the wild, almost twenty-five years, that's, that's suburban law. One of the, the German, um, started to discuss. You know, so, from here isn't the one, if you, I think the word should just be, you wrote. Some of the, they, they visit the place in the metropolitan area where families can establish all ownership, enjoy. Then, then, then that's more, it's more, it's suburban, you get, same amount, you know, finally.
We can, we can look at that. Uh, yeah, so for the sake of the motion, um, if the board is agreeable to those, which we embody language, I think you are, uh, I would just recommend that, you know, the, the, the motion would be to move to adopt the ordinance, the number and the name of the ordinance. And then say, uh, and including the, uh, two amendments described by S D Holmes or something, something to that effect, and, and Karen has other notes. Will we trigger for a flight today?
Other than for, other questions or comments? Trustee Woods? Let's be, okay. Trustee Holmes? Trustee Greaves? No. Trustee Thompson? Thank you for your statements.
I just wanted to chat with you. No, we, we appreciate. Staff, I appreciate that too, and this is a huge document, which we, we want to make sure we get everything right with it, and the board should know that trustee Holmes had some great, also grammatical, and, you know, corrections too that were overlooked as well, so we greatly appreciate that, yes.
But with that, um, can we entertain a motion?
Oh, that we, uh, approve ordinance twenty-three day ago for ordinance to adopt, adopt the twenty-twenty-three round here comprehensive plan update and then chapter one eighteen comprehensive planning, the village code ordinances, along with the two amendments from.
Trustee Woods, thank you very much. Is there a second? Thank you. Can, do we need a roll call vote for this? Uh, we didn't need a roll call vote yet. Uh, we will do a roll call vote, trustee Hooker, trustee Woods. I. Trustee Holmes, uh, trustee Greaves. I, trustee Thompson. I. President Montgomery. The ordinance, um, comprehensive plan and ordinance update has been adopted. Alright, the next item on our agenda is the, uh, presented by the public. Discharge, elimination of this. Annual report for activity of twenty-twenty-two. Back we will be. In that course.
Alright, so this is our annual stormwater report update, uh, there's no action that we need, it's just a presentation, uh, that I had to do publicly as part of our, the D N R. This did go to finance, or sorry, the public works and communication committee, um, earlier in the month. I think we had some great discussion there, and a lot of new folks on that committee, so they got to learn all about stormwater and our, our storm, storm system in Brown here. Um, we completed our, our stormwater management plan update in twenty-twenty, and have been kind of operating off of that, uh, that curve book ever since. Um, you'll hear this term a lot, um, T M D L, that's total maximum daily load. And so we have some kind of high numbers that we have to hit, um, in the village. And so anytime we're doing a new road project or development project, we're adding stormwater features uh, to those projects in order for us to reduce our load load into the Milwaukee River. Okay, um, one of the big benefits that we have in the village though, is our, um, roadside ditch system, and so that's something that we're annually maintaining and taking care of. We get credit, um, for, because when it rains, it's going into the ditch, and then from there, it's kind of infiltrating in, and so we get credit for, uh, food reduction with our ditch system. Some other communities are not in the same boat, where if they have curving gutter everywhere, they build out, it's very difficult to deal with stormwater and humidity. So around here, uh, that's one of the big things we do every summer is a ditch cleaning project, and we usually coordinate that with a water main relay and a road paving project. Um, this year we have, uh, North Sixty-third Street is what we'll be doing, and then also Kevy Court, uh, we'll probably start that in the month of March. Uh, the water main will go in July, ditch in August, and then we'll pave the street in September. Um, we have, uh, one street sweeper in the village, and that's pretty much running constantly. Um, Dan Singer, he's also out cleaning catch basins, um, and then he does inspections on them, and then, um, uh, do, we load that up into the G I S. So typically, he's usually out in this park plaza neighborhood, um. This, this is what we show to at the committees, committee level, uh. There's, we have all of our pipes and catch basins mapped, and then when Dan is out, he has a tablet, and so he'll, once he's finishing a catch basin, he'll enter in all of the data, um, at that catch base. So very helpful, um, he's our one stormwater technician. Um, usually he'll, he'll have some help with some other, other guys as needed, but Dan's usually the one that's running the street sweeper and, uh, cleaning the catch bases, and then he's also on the ditch call recruit right now. So currently the guys that are finishing up some work from last year, and will be moving into our, our big ditch project, um, once the, once the water main's done. Let's kind of look at highlights, um, we have some, some projects that are still out there. Um, we're gonna be, still want to tackle this Beaver Creek, um, Beaver Creek by Walmart, or just on the south side of Brown here, uh, that's gonna be a naturalization project. And then we also have two stretches on South Branch Creek, uh, from Fifty-first to Tacto that we might tackle in the future as well. So kind of looking for some grant funding, but other funding would be by the utility. So with that, if there's any questions, or Ed, if I missed anything, or if you remember from the meeting, by all means, but that's kind of the, the highlights.
Any questions?
Okay, there will be any action on that, so.
Thank you very much. And then, um, the next item is consider approval of compliance maintenance annual agreement. C M A R, smarm, and adoption of resolution number twenty-three twelve authorized in the middle to the Department of Natural Resources and that view.
Yes, so this is me again, so, um, also we have a permit with the D N R, and this is for our sanitary sewer collection system. Um, again, this was also presented at the public group specification committee earlier in the month. Um, so a couple of big highlights here, um, Dana Volker, he's our sanitary sewer technician, so he is in charge of all of the fifty-five miles of sanitary sewers, that's one of hundred of those, and then all of our manholes as well. But typical day for Dana is he's out cleaning sewers right now, um. You load that data into the G I S, and then he'll, uh, come back and he'll televise those sewer pipes. Uh, so he's kind of got a, a, a system where he's trying to focus on different areas of the village, and um, we try to clean and televise our system about ten percent of it. This past year, we're a little bit down, uh, we're probably more like six, six and a half percent. Um, Dana had some medical things that goes out for a little while, um, but we're gonna catch up this year, um, in pharmacy that again, so not, not, not to worry that we're gonna fall behind others, including, we also were pretty far ahead from the years we prior, because we had some contractor work in here, and that also accounts, uh, to our cleaning and televised. Um, so yeah, we share our, our sewer TV truck with the village of Shorewood, um, and City of Backwater. And then so we get that once every third month. This rotates between the communities, so Dana's making sure he has enough lines cleaned ahead, uh, when we're gonna get the sewer truck, and then he's in there, uh, raining all of the pipes, uh, finding any deficiencies that will then come across my desk, and we'll put together a project, uh, for repairs or replacements, or typically it's sewer line jobs. Um, you've probably heard me talk about this in the past, we have two problem areas in the village, um, where we'll get what's called S S O's, sanitary sewer overflow. Um, one of them is down in the southwest corner, um, this is the Bradley Estates subdivision, and usually we'll have an overflow here at about sixty, uh, sixty-first and Darrell. Uh, we have a bypass line set up underneath Sixtieth Street, we'll go discharge into the M M S D sewer system directly. Uh, we focus, so we're focusing a lot of our efforts into that neighborhood. Um, we have last, uh, year and a half ago, we finished all of the, uh, main line lining in this neighborhood. So it's set up now for, um, where we can start tackling the ladders, that's the pipe running from the house out to the street. Uh, so that's our next goal, is to take M M S D money and then start lining, um, lining sewer tubes. The other neighborhood is the Green Knoll subdivision, just to the north of here. Um, about two hundred and fifty homes in this neighborhood, we lined seventy-five of them already, lateral pipes, and the whole neighborhood, all of the mains have been lined. So these are our two areas where it rains real heavy, that's when we're getting extra water that's not supposed to be in our sewer system, and creating a capacity problem, and so we don't want the water way in the basements, so we'll get out and we'll have the pump on the way down. But that's also not good, because we're putting sanitary sewage into the ditches, so. The way to solve that is by eliminating this clear water from getting indoors. And so that's our two big areas of focus. Um, and, you know, Dana does fight other issues as our system is aging, so we have to keep an eye on that as well, but these are the two big problems. We had no S S O's last year, um, so I think that's our second year rolling out, without any S S O, so it's a really good thing. And that probably sanitary sewer overflow. Yeah. So backups, yes. So both of those neighborhoods. We would, we were, uh, in good shape on it, and I think that's attributable to all the work that we've done from there so far. So we just want to keep improving on that, where Dana doesn't want to get up in the middle of the night and it's raining and worried about those two, and those two problem spots, so. We're just gonna kind of continue as is and still focus on correcting issues there, but. Other than that, that said, uh, this one does require, um, a motion that we, the local folks, to challenge that.
Any more questions? And I remember this area of having some backups a few years ago, because people would call.
Yeah, in that Bradley Estates subdivision, that was a problem about three years ago, I wouldn't say now, we did have a big problem down there, where there was a bunch of homes that, that had backed up, and that was prior to us lining all of the mains in that neighborhood, so. I'm, I'm thinking that all that work that we've done, definitely has.
Well, that's good. Good news. If there are no questions, we do need a, uh, hope to approve adoption of this resolution twenty-three twelve, authorized in the middle to what happened, I can add a new book.
I, I move to approve, uh, the, and the compliance maintenance annual report and adoption of the resolution operating in the middle to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Is there a second? I'll second. It's been ruled by trustee Greaves and second by trustee Thompson to approve the compliance maintenance annual report and adoption of the revenue's authorized in the middle to Wisconsin Department of Metropolitan. Oh, oh, trustee Booker. Uh, trustee Woods, uh, trustee Holmes, uh, trustee Greaves, uh, trustee Thompson. Revolution is adopted. The next item on our agenda is consider approval of the agreement practical services with Clark Deeds. A, for general engineering services. I think your animals.
No, so I, I kids. Yeah, I, they had the same thing and then I, yeah, I came down with it as well here, so. Yeah. No allergies, no. All right, so, um, a couple of years ago, we had eliminated the position of our engineering tech. Uh, we have full time engineering tech, we had two different individuals since I've been here that were in that role. Um, they were mainly doing a lot of these things that I'm presenting on right now, a bunch of reporting with our sanitary sewer system. Stormwater system, uh, they were in charge of the road paving program and then doing right away permits. Which are kind of their big work tasks that they were handling and then also handling, um, construction inspection in the summer. Um, as kind of time went on, this position, it really became a very seasonal type. Position and it was hard to keep them busy full time throughout the entire year. Um, so at one of the budget seasons, we did make the decision to eliminate the position, um.
Not to mention that, sorry, not to mention the turnover and the difficulty of the crew for it too.
That was also a problem, yes, um, it was kind of used as like a stepping stone type of position, we're getting either younger and younger engineers. But, you know, once they kind of got enough experience or their, or license, they're capable, we could not put them in this role. Um, and so that, that was also a problem. Um, so a lot of those tasks, they just kind of fell back into my lap, um, and. You know, everything's still getting done, it's just maybe some things are taking a lot longer, um, than they have to. We have been reaching out to different various consultants for help as well on certain tasks. Um, but we did end up saving the village approximately like six thousand dollars anyway, um. However, there's this little pretty large gap that exists and we're looking to fill that gap. With, uh, Clark Deeds who provides, uh, the, the same service in the other North Shore crews. And so we're looking for some consistency, um, this is underneath the village manager signing authority. However, we are bringing it forward just because it's a new type of service, um, so we're looking for board approval. I do have Mustafa here, he's, uh, with Clark Deeds. Um, and he can answer any questions on some other stuff that they've been helping the other communities out. But initially what we're looking for is right of way permit assistance, that's my biggest backlog that I have in the village. So anytime there's a utility company that's doing work, whether it's A T and T, uh, we energy's gas, electric. Or the other communications companies, they have to apply for a permit with us so that they can locate their facility in our right. Well, it requires a lot of plan review to make sure that we don't have any utility conflicts. Um, and so I have a severe backlog on these permits and a lot of getting these guys going and, and working. Clark Deeds' uh, cost here, and this would come at a future board meeting. We are proposing to pass through their costs, um, right onto the utility. So this would just get wrapped into their permit fee, which we already have a structure in place. We would just add some language in there, um, for review fees as well, so the village wouldn't have to pay any money there. Any, um, some of the other things that we're looking for help with is like smog wash control or stormwater type reviews. That the utility would pay for and or, um, combination of a developer if it's on a private project. So. With that, Tyler and Mustafa, yeah, you wanna?
Yeah, President, the trustees, good evening, my name is Mustafa, Mustafa in here, I represent Clark Deeds, uh, we are. Uh, a, a, a branch of a, of a Midwestern company. And, uh, as, as Matthew just said, um, we are, uh, providing general engineering, municipal engineering. Uh, services for communities in the North Shore mostly. Who are not lucky enough to have their own engineer onboard. Um, so we're the engineer of record in places like Glendale. And River Hills and, uh, Bayside, uh, Flankish Bay. And, uh, we provide both design services but also administrative services as Matthew described. In many of our municipal codes, um, the, the, and many of the permits allow for the villages. Um, to essentially establish a fee structure where the. The permit applicant. Bear the cost of professional services, be it law, sort of legal services or professional services. Or legal services, um. So we were talking about, uh, a similar structure, um, in Brown Deer, I think that, uh. That's probably the next step, um, the, uh, uh, things, stormwater permits. Um, require both professional and field services. Uh, erosion control require your permit with the D N R requires a very strict sort of record keeping arrangement. Uh, et cetera, so, um. We've worked in, uh, communities, um, and, and both administration and legal to. Uh, make sure that the mechanism is in place. Uh, for example, just, just got an erosion control permit application in Bayside. That ordinance, just like yours, allowed for, uh, escrow. So our services to you are essentially passed through, our inspections. Of the property are passed through, et cetera, so that's, uh, how we, uh, imagined. Uh, our services to be, uh, because, uh. Think, uh, uh, that's a gap that Matthew sort of. Reached out and described, uh, so. There we have it, uh, if you have any. Questions as to who we are, what we are, please.
Any questions? You said you get that on how many? Can you guess I mean, how many cases you're talking about?
I, I probably have about fifteen to twenty permits that are sitting out there from utilities, yeah.
And then, uh, stop on that. How long would it take you to clear out and back off?
Um, so if it, it's not a. My, so in our experience, so we, we are doing this in, in other places and. The most, uh, common response, so the, the, is that it's an incomplete application. Right, so you don't do the work for them, as Matthew said, the issue is where they think they're putting, uh, their stuff. And most of their original submitter. Uh, doesn't even bother looking at the village's G I S or S V data, they just submit, easy to do. So I would say that the first blush is relatively quick because it's gonna be a bunch of. Reapply, like, okay, they'll show everything and send it. So that would be. Sort of our first, uh. Quick response, right, and, um. The, uh, the other thing is that it occurred to me that those were taken in. Probably without adequate fees. And so, which means we're gonna be. Uh, in a position to do work but not be burdened to you, um. As we would, uh, uh, you know, do anywhere. Um, so we're gonna have to put a basic, I don't know. It could be a permit provision or whatever scheme that you can apply. So we're gonna work through that, our intent, so that's gonna be a little bit of a dance. Um, our intent, as Matthew said, that, you know, the, the, the contract that I provided, that's your license. So I'm trying not to be included in your budget. So that, you know, this is sort of service paid by others. So that, you know, if, if, if we are at a place where I actually sort of build the village. Then we'll talk about that later. Um, so that's a long winded way of saying, I don't know, but it will be a relatively quick movement and then. Um, Tyler and, and Nathan and you and I, we're, we're gonna find a way to charge these people. Which I assure you, they're not unfamiliar with, uh, like in Glendale with each other. Uh, three hundred dollars per blend sheets a minute. Okay, which more than covers us and leaves almost forty percent of the permit fee. Community fed back into Canada.
Right, yeah, just, you know, usually these, it just totally depends, it's hard to say because some of them could be a, I have a large project that's sitting up on Honeyline Road. Um, we're doing the gas, high pressure gas, um, replacing them there. And so a permit like that, that's gonna take me a few hours to go through and likely I'll end up marking up the plans with all sorts of comments, sending it back. You know, so it's kind of a back and forth type thing, um, there are, there's some small ones, like if there's. A gas service replacement from the right of way line up to the house, that can take not fifteen minutes to process and get out of here. So there's, there's a bunch of those that, yeah, you're gonna look at and. There's nothing to, but these bigger ones where there's a communications one going from. I had one from Bradley Road that started way out in Milwaukee, like on a hundred and seventh street, came all the way into the village. And then went up fifty first street, that took me, you know, a day or two days. And then not to mention Reverb, Re, so, um. Yeah, that, that's, but like we said in here, that's just my biggest gap right now. And then they go in cycles, sometimes there'll be months where I don't get a lot and then suddenly there's a ton of them.
In that, um, we need approval of the. Is there a second? If the move by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Greaves. To approve the, the practical therapy, Clark Deeds, incorporate the general engineering services. All in favor, uh, Indian Falls. I just had it multiple years. Um, Matthew, can you come back to us once you kind of get into the back half?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're down to?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I can do it, I can bring my report.
Right, okay. Um, that includes our agenda tonight, so I will approve it is six forty four. Thank you for that.